Order of the Planning Commission. And want to wish Rodney's wife Rhonda a happy birthday. Rodney's not here this evening, they're out on a special birthday dinner, so happy birthday to Rhonda. And then we'll begin with considering approval of the Planning Commission meeting minutes of September 11th, 2017.
Will you approve?
Second.
It's a motion by Engelberger, second by Truell. Comments or discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries. We'll have a council representative report from older person Truell.
Thank you, Your Honor. At the council meeting of the 26th, the council took up the conditional use permit, continue to approve the conditional use permit for Calvary Gospel that we had reviewed, also approved the conditional use permit for Conant Automotive as we had approved, also approved the in-vehicle service at the new Goodwill location. The council did table the conditional use permit for the fuel station. And we will have a report coming back, I think, tomorrow evening. There was a concern about the amount of work that was happening on that parking lot, as to whether or not it falls under a new parking lot would require those requirements, so... But those were the material items that we took up.
Great, thank you. Alderman Bartlett.
Question, Michael, could you send out that letter to the Planning Commission? Lana sent out a letter from the Pick and Save owners.
Oh, sure.
Just about what they were doing.
Okay.
But I know the others haven't seen it.
Did you want to share?
Well, just a letter that they ran into subsoil issues and some other underneath the parking lot, so they were resurfacing the whole parking lot and doing more work than they planned, but it wasn't really detailed, but it sounded like that was the reasoning.
And the gas station got tabled, but there's piles there, aren't there? Are they... Were they constructing it already?
Well, they ran into some subsoil issues, some sand, and so they had to remove some sand and...
Oh, okay.
In certain spots. I think they did pave some areas and did a roll test and it didn't work out, so I think they've been working on it.
I think the piles that you see there next to Highway 51 are from the resurfacing of that parking lot. They just moved everything to the end.
Okay.
So, yeah. All right, thank you. And in your packet tonight is a letter from... It's a memo from Planning Director Shiel regarding status of developments. If anyone have questions or comments, Michael I'm sure can help us through those. Okay, we'll move on. Agenda five is a request by Todd Nelson for a conditional use permit to allow two principal structures on one lot at 314 West Main Street. Michael, would you like to walk through that a little bit for us, please?
Sure. The conditional use is just related to a group development in this case, where you've got two principal structures on one lot. And in this case, the specific requirements for a group development is 40 feet between buildings, and he's proposing 20. It's a high-density residential lot, or will be if it's approved at the council, so I think his... I think he provided a letter that's in front of you that kind of addresses why he wants two four-unit buildings rather than an eight-unit building on there. And I did check other communities to see what they have as far as group developments, and it seems like this is a Van De Waal and Associates requirement that they've put in their code. I don't see it any other place. I don't quite understand... In this case, it really doesn't... It doesn't work because even... I think the whole intent is to be able to split this lot up in the future, if the owner so desired. And so then he would still... They would still comply with the 20-foot setback, side yard setback for the buildings. In this case, it won't work because if they split the lot, they won't have the required frontage, because the lot is... It's an infill lot, it's rather small, you know. MR24 would typically see larger lots and, you know, many more units. I haven't really come across this issue before, so he would like to either reduce that or find a way around that 40-foot requirement between the buildings for a group development.
Thanks, Michael. I'm going to close the meeting and open a public hearing, and ask if there's anyone here wishing to speak at this public hearing. Welcome. Could you tell us your name and address, please?
Ellie Burke, and I'm 209 South Prairie Street.
Thank you.
I'm right next to the empty lot that they're proposing. I guess I just have a couple of questions, like what they're going to be exactly building there, because, I mean, I got a letter, but it doesn't really explain much, other than how they're building.
Sure.
Yeah, it's two four-unit residential buildings.
Okay.
You want to pull up the plans, Michael?
Okay.
Yeah, two four-unit apartment buildings. Always makes more sense to me than residential buildings. I know what it... That's...
Okay.
Planning speak.
And I assume that the material that was on my desk that I passed to the other folks were perhaps the material, the exterior material? Or is that something else?
Yeah, that's the exterior materials, yep.
Okay. Can you show us what it looks like on the outside, Michael?
I sure can.
There we go.
And there was a link, actually, to the public hearing notice that would have directed you to an online spot that would have had these materials.
Okay, sorry, I just didn't see it. Do... Where... Are they going to have a driveway or anything, I guess?
Yep, I just need to go back.
Yeah.
There's access off Prairie.
Yeah, there's an access off Prairie Street, and then there's also an access off Main Street.
So if I were driving in, can you show us with your mouse, how would I drive in?
Well, you'd have a couple options. You could come in from Prairie, or you could come in from West Main Street and come in. Parking is here, or there's also four spots outside.
Okay.
The park... The access off Main Street needs to stay there because there is access... There's an easement that allows access to a garage that's in the northeast corner. Yeah, I don't know if I have that.
Probably one of your neighbors.
That's what that driveway is, the easement.
Are you talking about one of my neighbor...
The access easement, yeah.
Yep, right next to the...
Okay. So that... The driveway would be right next to my driveway, is what, right?
Yes. Oh, you're right next door?
Yeah.
It'd be whatever the distance is away there.
Yeah, I don't know, there's silver...
There's a fence in between.
24 feet from the property line.
Where would they be putting, like, the garbage, you know, all the garbage and the trash?
Dumpster's right here.
I mean, that's one of my concerns, because that would, like, greatly, I guess, decrease the value of my house, you know? Like, having apartments, period, around there would probably be, you know, decrease the value of my house, but...
There is a six-foot-high fence proposed along this lot line, and then there'd be a dumpster enclosure right here.
Okay.
They included a picture of that as well.
Yeah, there is. There's a picture.
Dumpster is, according to the plans, set to be 18 feet.
Extremely large picture, but...
18 feet off the property line.
Okay.
It's... You can't access this.
It's an example of what it could look like.
So that would be the six-foot fence behind there? Yep. And then the dumpster enclosure?
Yeah, there's...
For the reason that...
Would there be a possibility of moving it, like, in a different location or something, and not right there?
Red house, here.
Moving what?
The dumpster.
The dumpster, like, because you have it right there, right when it's...
It'd be on the other side of the fence from you.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's a better location. It would have to be, obviously, somewhere along this side, so...
Yeah.
I think that's there so that the garbage folks can get in and pick it up.
Garbage truck access.
To her point, though, I mean, there... It would... At least, conceptually, it would seem as if it could perhaps be all the way to the eastern edge of the parking lot, too, where there's a... It's shown as a picnic table.
Yeah.
You've got... You still need to keep that roadway that's identified there, but right now that's where he's showing green space in that corner, and perhaps those two could be switched.
Yeah, that's what I... That's what I'm suggesting, yeah.
Switch the picnic table with the dumpster location.
Possibility.
I'll have to ask, is the picnic table in green space, and I only ask this because I work with the Greenspire folks in those apartments, in that their picnic tables being placed in a green space like this because folks are not allowed to smoke in the apartments? And that's where they're able to go outside to smoke? I don't know that that's the case here, but I wonder...
I could see that.
If you're trading one for the other.
So why can't they have the parking lot on the other side again? Is there just...
Say that again, please.
Why can't they have, like, the parking lot on the Main Street there? Is there, like, a code?
I think it would be...
The front of the building.
It would be complicated for people to back into Main Street. I'm sorry, Alderman Truell, go ahead.
No, I apologize. We actually... Alderman Engelberger and I were both saying the same thing. Effectively, the front of the building is to Main Street, in terms of kind of the setbacks. And with what it appears, and again, we're... Unfortunately, the developers, you know, we're answering questions about the developers' plans, but it appeared that to get the driveway access on Prairie, we can't put it in the front corner because of... It'd be too close to the stop sign and the like, and so you'd need to have it a certain distance back off of Main Street.
Okay.
He's required to have so much green space also, so he really needs... If he's going to have his garages back here, I mean, he's got to get his green space someplace.
And also, if it was reversed, you would have the second-story units looking right into your yard.
Yeah.
This way, you don't have that. If you can go back to the elevations and show her what it would look like, what she would see. The bottom-left one here, the bottom-left corner is what you would see, you know, if you were looking over the fence. Of course, there'll be a fence there, but you wouldn't have any windows facing your property.
Okay. I didn't realize that they had garages there, so... Okay.
Okay, I hope we helped. Did you have any other questions?
Um, not at the moment, no. But thank you.
Okay, and you can always call City Hall if you have some more questions and talk to Michael.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
I think with her concern, though, it is something that we should probably let Mr. Nelson know to see if there is a better placement for that dumpster, rather than right up front. Try and see if they can perhaps move it to the other side or realign things, perhaps.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
All right, thank you. Okay, see, no one else here for the public hearing. I'll close the public hearing and reopen for the remainder of business. Comments, discussion from our commissioners this evening regarding the conditional use permit?
Just a question, perhaps. Again, the letter that's at our desk. I'm a little confused as to exactly what it's looking for, or is he just simply responding as to why?
I think he's just trying to provide some input, knowing that he wasn't going to be here, you know, trying to anticipate what the questions would be, why, you know, why two, four units instead of an eight unit? Or try to, you know, cram 12 units on there, which isn't really feasible.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's sort of what he was trying to do. You know, and the code just doesn't do a very good job on a smaller, you know, higher-density lot like this, requiring this kind of dwelling setback.
From my standpoint, the two potential two buildings with the break actually is more appealing on Main Street, giving it more residential feel, so...
Yep, I agree.
I just wasn't sure if there was anything else that we were... That he was looking for there.
Commissioner Hanna.
Thanks. So, for us, if we designate it or make the switch for the conditional use, do we put a condition in there that allows for the 20-foot setback, you know, because we're not adjusting, you know, the ordinance right now or the code right now? How do we go about the proper way to approve this if we choose to do so that would allow for the 20-foot?
I don't know if you can just do that as part of the conditional use, because it's a requirement in the code. I could ask a city attorney, but, you know, I think you'd almost have to have a code change.
Before... You don't think that they could approve...
Hold it on.
They could...
Approve it contingent on.
Could they approve this as an exception to that code?
It doesn't say that it's an exception. It's, you know, it's a requirement.
Could they waive the requirement? I'm sorry, I'm just trying to think of ways to allow it to...
Yeah, that's a...
Can they waive the requirement?
That's a Matt Dregney question. I couldn't say for sure if they could change that.
Right, I guess, is it similar to things that we voted on in the past with different site plans? Now, this isn't necessarily a site plan at this, you know, Agenda Item 5. On the site plan approvals in the past, we've allowed different exceptions. So maybe Agenda Item 5, we make the ruling for group and then put an exception into Agenda Item 6 in a site plan? Does that seem logical?
Because when we get to the site plan, there's also a building separation requirement that requires 40 feet, so it's twofold. In the group development, it requires it, the 40 feet, and there's also another requirement, separation requirement, that's 40 feet, that would have to be either amended or, you know, you'd have to revise its plans.
Sure.
Commissioner Hanna.
So from knowing all the zoning classifications, group seems to be the... Oh, yeah. I mean, is the group development, is that a zoning classification, or it's SR12, right?
MR24.
MR24 is what it will be if it's approved, I think, tomorrow night.
But so the conditional use, is there another conditional use that would fit under, that we could designate it, or does the group development seem like we need to do it that way?
The group development is what's kicking in the conditional use for the two individual principal structures on one lot.
Otherwise, it'd have to be separated.
And what makes it a group development?
That, in and of itself, makes it a group development, is that there's two principal structures on one lot, so, yeah, and there's other requirements that go along with it, but not that many. I question, you know, how valuable the group development regulations are. I look at other communities and they've got, you know, there's pages and pages of requirements, and, you know, ours are pretty short and it doesn't seem to really... The requirements are a little bit ridiculous, it seems, but...
Could the commissioners, if they so choose, make a motion to approve the conditional use permit and waive that requirement? And then, I mean, we can certainly follow up with Attorney Dregney as to whether or not this is allowable.
Could try. You could try. I don't know if that's legal or not.
Good point.
I guess if I could, I guess, if we're going to do something like that, why don't we do it up front and have an attorney give us the opinion before we decide what it is? I mean, that's... To me, that's what we should be doing.
Are you making a motion to table?
I might want to discuss this a little more, so I'm not sure.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, I just... My feeling is, to go down the road where we do something that we're not sure is legal and have...
It seems like...
...the thoughts that we've had with some other people, I don't think I'd want to do that.
Right, it seems like it's a requirement. I don't know how you can steer around or make a special exception. Then it would be listed as a special exception or something like that. It seems like the code would have to be changed, but I'm not... I'm not an attorney.
Sure, I was just trying to think of a way outside the box, maybe, to move forward. Alderman Truell.
Our section, Matt.
Okay.
Sure. Some conversations with Mr. Nelson. Is he thinking getting foundations in in 2017, or... I mean...
I don't know.
Personally, I... I don't know. I don't, I guess, looking at the other development, I think he needs to focus on finishing that up. It's been going on for far too long that, in this case, I'd want to do it right and maybe wait, and make sure he has all his ducks in a row, because it seems like the last development, infill development, did. Although, I think it's coming together, it's been a long process to get it to that point. So I'm probably thinking waiting, and let's do it right, because I feel, I mean, that the way that that plan, the exterior plan on that lot has come together is way different than what we first saw and what we first looked at, and I don't think any of us have... Which isn't, I mean, I trust you guys that you're doing it right, but, you know, that plan is completely adjusted from what we originally saw. So in this sense, I appreciate Mr. Nelson doing all this infill, and I think infill development is great, but because we need the conditional use, I think it needs to be right, before we jump ahead.
Yeah, the soonest, if we're looking at a code change and all this, the soonest he could potentially get approval even now would be December. So I don't know if he's going to get anything going this year, to be honest with you.
Alderman Truell.
Thank you. Two items. One, can you provide us a little bit of the background? I know we've had... Council's had discussion, I think commissioners had discussions about the development behind Wells, as to what kind of happened. There were, with my understanding, that there were a number of conditions that kind of came up after he brought the approvals. Council had raised a number of concerns about that same thing, about not being able to complete the landscaping and the like, so if you could provide us a bit of an update on that, and then, second, I'll come back and talk about the timing that I'm aware of here.
Yeah, I haven't been directly involved with it. A building inspector and Rodney was... Rodney Shiel was involved with it, but from what I know is, they opened up the street early on in the project and, for whatever reason, didn't get their stormwater stuff done when they had it open. So then they had to revise their stormwater plan, because they didn't want to open the street again. And doing that really set them, you know, set a lot of things back, because you can't do landscaping, there's so many things you can't do. You know, the sidewalk is still not done, so that's what set them back, and I think he's still struggling to get there. I think most of the landscaping is in, but the sidewalk still isn't in. But they're working on it, and we're trying to require them to get it done before the snow flies.
And the reason I asked for that is, I was led to believe in my conversation with Rodney after a council... Council raising questions about this, I was given the impression that a lot of that was out of his control. And again, we certainly had questions and concerns. I don't know what prompted the original not getting the storm tied in, whether that was something that he was involved in or not, but because a number of council people had raised this question, and we've talked about this development and, you know, other things he's proposed on the other side of town, so I wanted to bring that up. It's my understanding, in terms of timing, that I don't believe that this is being pushed to try and get foundations in. It actually is a case that as a part of our... The offer, the accepted offer to the redevelopment authority, he has to close before the end of the year, and then develop this property and have it be of an appropriate value by the end of next year. The point was, as a part of the offer, he needed to do a fair amount of the due diligence and get a lot of the approvals squared away, so to enable him to be able to close by December. And so I think that's ultimately, Matt, to your question about is he trying to get foundations in, I don't believe that's the answer. But it's more of a case of making sure that approvals are in place so that he can close by the end of the year for us to be able to... RDA to sell this property to him, so...
Yep, thank you.
Makes sense.
Further comments or thoughts, questions? Alderman Hanna.
Thanks.
Alderman Hanna, all of a sudden you've become an older person. Welcome, welcome. How about Commissioner Hanna?
So if we do table this, the timeline, would the timeline fit? To get it turned over in order to fit the plan that's been approved with RDA?
It's going to be tight.
I believe the answer's probably no, but I don't... I don't know that that's a, you know, a death knell to the project. The flip side is, I share the concerns about, you know, blatantly going, just kind of blatantly jumping out there and approving something that could come back to us anyway. I guess in that regard, I'm especially disappointed that Mr. Nelson isn't here, that we couldn't have the conversation to say, okay, what are our options? I guess the only thing I would throw out there is, if the commission were willing, is that seemingly, this is, it's obviously just one of a couple items on tonight's agenda, if we could get some kind of ruling, if we needed to meet again as a special meeting, rather than necessarily waiting until the second meeting of November so that the next items could happen, you know, that might be the only other option in terms of timing.
That's right, thank you. Commissioner Barman.
Thanks, Mayor. I do think it makes sense to table in Part II, because the city council has actually not even addressed whether they're going to rezone it to multifamily residential yet, which would seem to have some impact on this. But, excuse me, in our conversation, even in tabling, and I'd be open to have in the special meeting, is there a way for the commission to communicate the fact that we are actually amenable to having two units rather than a single unit, so that we at least communicate to Mr. Nelson that we are open to this concept? We just got to make sure we figure out how to do it right.
How to do it, yeah.
Okay. Certainly, Michael can follow up for us. You bet.
Yep.
You bet.
Sure, I think if, you know, response to a site plan, and if that moves forward, that might be enough to tell them. Plan looks good, but hash out some details.
Right. Sounds like I would entertain a motion to table.
A motion to table, second.
There's a motion by Hanna, second by Kirchma, to table. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? There's a request by Todd Nelson for site plan approval for this same area to construct two four-unit residential buildings at 314 West Main Street. Michael.
Yes, so I guess I could say I did a little bit of research. We'll have to get back to the requirement for building separation, and here's kind of a summary of the building separation requirements by district. As you see for this proposed district, if it is rezoned MR24, it requires 40 feet in between the buildings, similar to, like, heavy industrial. And I did some, just calling around to see what other communities require for, just for the higher-density multifamily, and, for example, Fitchburg doesn't have any requirements, and they fall back on the building and fire codes to control setbacks between buildings. But it's kind of a mixed bag. Verona requires 30 feet. Milton doesn't list any requirements. Portage-McFarland, Mount Hore, no requirements. Some have it as part of a group development or design review. Sun Prairie is 24 feet in this case. Conan Walk didn't have any listed, and Wanakee had 24, and that depended on building height. So it's kind of all over the place, but ultimately, you're going to have to decide whether you want to change the code in this case from the 40 to something else, or remove it and fall back on your building and fire codes, or...
And what are the building and fire codes for Stoughton? What would be the requirement, do you know?
It's really dependent on the materials used. I asked Steve the question before he left, and there isn't a definitive, okay, it's 10 feet. It's... There's nothing really set in stone. It's just, there's a number of variables that come into play, and I'm not a building code guy, but that's kind of what I found out.
Okay. All right, comments, thoughts?
I guess in terms of the site, the other thing that would be good to know would be to take the... I can't forget my name, but...
Ellie.
Comment about, concern about the dumpster, I would also be inclined to want to see if Mr. Nelson could create something that's all, perhaps, again, maybe move the... maybe move the dumpster enclosure to a different location on there as well as a part of the site plan.
Sure.
But they seem like they're intrinsically tied together. So, you know, I guess my initial thought here is, does it make sense to table this as well?
Commissioner Hannah.
Thanks. Yeah, I would say, I mean, we should provide some, some direction for them. You know, I know there isn't, doesn't seem like there's an intent because it really wouldn't fit to ever split the lot the way that it's laid out, you know? So, I know there were some other notes in here about landscaping, I think.
Yep.
It'd be nice to see a more defined landscape plan, and there's more points required for certain things. And then, Michael, could you talk about the gathering area that looks like a requirement here?
I, I questioned Todd about that today, and he said the area where the picnic table's located was proposed to be the gathering area. And that's... So, I guess moving the dumpster there, you know, maybe the gathering area ends up being, you know, to the, to the west, I, I don't know.
Because they put the gathering area in between the two.
In here somewhere?
Yeah, I mean, you could possibly widen it a little bit, I don't, well, I guess I don't know how far, where the street is, I hear some, but.
Do we have specific requirements for gathering area? I'm not aware of.
Yeah, as part of the group development, I think there's a gathering area requirement.
There's no like area needed for a certain amount of people, anything like that?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not that specific.
And it's not an inside gathering area, but it can be an outside.
Outside, outside gathering area, yeah.
If you really gather any old spot, I mean.
Yeah.
Gathering the lawn if you wanted to.
But I think it's designed, I mean, I think, again, that whole concept of it being a, a larger complex, a group complex, multi-b buildings, that you'd want it, we'd want to make sure we've got some type of a community space with these two small buildings. I, I don't know that it's...
Doesn't seem that it fits.
It, you know, we, we still need, again, I'm, I'm going to, going to jump on, on a, a train that Alderman Engelberger gets, gets, brings, reminds us a lot of times, and that is, we still need to make sure that we're being consistent across, we have to not only look at this project, we have to look at, at exemptions and exclusions and, and changes that we make and how it affects everybody else. And so, again, if there's a, if there's a need for us to look at that whole, the whole discussion of, of this zoning classification, you know, as you said, it's kind of a mixed bag, that sounds like something we should take up regardless.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, from our standpoint, we need to, if, if we're, we're looking to try and create something here, just understand whatever exemptions or exclusions were, variances we potentially are granting, and, and make sure that it doesn't come back to bite us in the next five projects.
Commissioner Barman.
Thanks, Mayor. I think, I, I agree with everything that's been said so far. I think, you know, looking at opportunities to relocate the dumpster, and I don't know if I personally would consider throwing a picnic table off in the corner as being, creating a common area. But the biggest issue I personally have with the site plan is the relationship of the two buildings with Main Street. The fact that, looking at the, not only the front facade of the buildings, but the sidewalk arrangement, there's, there's no entrances on the front of the building facing Main Street, and it, and there's no reason why you couldn't design those front units where the sidewalk comes up along the west and east side of those buildings and enters from those sides. Why that, that you couldn't have those front doors come off of Main Street? I just, I just think, one of the precedents I'm concerned about is the relationship to the public space not too far out of the downtown. And to me, the two buildings don't speak well to Main Street at that particular location. I'm also a little bit wondering why there isn't, even for the upper story units, some sort of balcony or some sort of other way. There's no porch, there's no balcony, there's no relationship to the sidewalk, to the street of the two buildings. And I, I don't think it would be that hard, and would probably make the units more marketable to have those kinds of improvements to the site plan. And then, then you start bringing the common area into the area between the Main Street sidewalk and the front of the building, or between the buildings.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kirchma.
Yeah, I mean, is the, is the front setback, is that what's required, or shouldn't it be closer to, right out to the sidewalk?
That's required at 25. Yeah, so it's, I mean, it's, he's got it pegged pretty tight on here.
Okay.
He's, he doesn't have room for.
So, so it can't be right up to the sidewalk like the rest of Main Street? That's not even feasible?
No, not in this district.
No, but if you look at the other residential properties along Main there, they all have porches, they all have sidewalks that are going up to an entry on the Main Street side. And so, having, I think that, you know, he's making the argument that bringing it down to two units rather than one large unit is more appropriate to the neighborhood. Well, having some sort of relationship to the Main Street sidewalk is more appropriate to the neighborhood as well.
Okay. Commissioner Kirchma.
But, but porches and everything would be, are affected by the setback.
Yeah.
Right. Yep. Does he have room to move them back?
I mean, having said that, I think, Commissioner Barman's comment, I mean, if, even if we can't change the, the street front, I, I thought the same thing in terms of porches and the like, even on the sides off of the living room, the, the living areas here just seem, these are, these are going to be efficiency-type units, and so finding other ways to, to provide a little extra relief and, and on it would, would seem to be something that, that we'd like to try and find a way to do that if we could. I also wasn't sure from a, back to our discussion about the setback between the two buildings, whether we have asked the fire chief if there's anything that they would like to see. When I saw that, that sidewalk through there, I was wondering if that was something that was going to be needed to be built to a point, to accommodate a fire truck? You know, do we need to be able to have our emergency vehicle to be able to, to drive up through that sidewalk?
No.
You know, between it?
I, I don't think there was any concerns by the fire department related to the site.
My reason for bringing back to the EMS side is, again, back to this point about there is no access on Main Street. The, to the north side, we've got the, we, we have the, the garages. The, the emergency access, to me, are, are on Prairie, on the, and then on the far east side, again, whatever we're calling that access point. But it would seem that, that, that perhaps we, we, again, not, not being an EMS tech here, but I would think that they would also want to be able to have access up that common sidewalk between the two buildings because we're talking about those units, you know, that, that really is the access point for that.
As long as we're taking things back, we can certainly take that back and get some feedback from Lisa and Scott.
Thank you. I got to agree with Commissioner Barman. I mean, we got to start looking at these plans a little closer, I think. You know, I mean, this is, this is like right outside of our downtown district, and basically what you got here is looking at the side of two buildings on Main Street. And, you know, it's, it, this is probably an effect of having too much building on too small of a lot, again. You know, it's, I know we want to do these infill projects, but it's, it's really hard to comply with everything, as you can see, by what comes back to us. Plus, you know, we got to look at what we're looking at. You know, I, I want to bring up something, it's not related to this building, but it's related to us looking at plans that come to us. When I drive out on Williams Drive and see that building that just went up, I got to look back in the plans to see, did I really approve that? I mean, to me, I look at that thing, there's not even a window in that building. And this is on an entryway into our city. I realize it's a, I realize this is a industrial park or a business park, but drive to Sun Prairie, drive to Verona, drive to any other town around here, and look at what they're putting up in their business parks and requiring people to build. They've got tilt-up buildings that look architecturally pleasant. We've got a, a metal shed that we just approved out there, and I, I got to, like I said, I got to take a look back at the plans that we approved to make sure that's what I actually approved, because if I did, I'm embarrassed about myself approving that, actually. But this is a, this is a thing that Todd brought up. I mean, you know, we don't even have a front of a building on Main Street a half a block from our downtown district. It's disappointing. And I'm not sure exactly what to do about it.
Well, some good feedback that Michael can share with Mr. Nelson when he talks to him a little further. What is your desire regarding Agenda Item Six and the site plan approval?
Move to table.
Second.
It's a motion by Kirchma, second by?
Truul.
Truul, to table. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries.
Was there any direction with, with that table?
Yes.
I guess something back that looks decent.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's, I think there's a number of comments there.
Yeah, it seems like it'd be feasible that, where he has the windows in the front, or the side facing Main Street, to have doors there instead of windows, on the, at least on the, on the lower units, and...
Okay.
Commissioner Hannah.
Yeah, thanks. So, regarding the setback, I mean, I think it sounds like there's more favor for getting a nice plan, and if there is an exception needed for, you know, that setback, it sounds like that would be favorable if a patio was pushed out to the front, or a porch, or a roof line, or something was brought out towards Main Street, would almost be more desirable than to have a 25-feet back. So, I would say, giving direction, I don't want to speak for you guys, but direction to Mr. Nelson that if he does push into the setback, that it'd be something that we'd probably be open to as long as it improves the, the curb, curb appeal to Main Street. So, I think that would be a good, good direction to him. It sounds like that's the biggest aesthetic concern and building concern, and then some of the other issues as far as dumpster location and, and landscaping.
Yep, and that's exactly what he's looking for, thank you.
And I guess my question to, to Michael is, at the end of the day, right now, the parking lot, the asphalt on the north side of the slot is 18 feet off the, the lot line. Do we have a minimum requirement there?
There is a, there's a buffer yard requirement, and I believe it's, it's 10 feet.
Okay, my, my reason for bringing that up is, at the end of the day, if we're looking for, we're, we're still looking at the same amount of green space, this whole development could perhaps move to the north, five feet, six feet, something, if we need to, to create that extra space on the front of the building, you know, too. So, I mean, there's, there is, there is, he's, my belief is that we're more limited that, in terms of trying to accomplish what he needs, we have more east-west constraints because we're, we're right at that 25 feet, we're at the 20 feet, you know, whatever. But there may be ability to move this whole, move those buildings perhaps a little bit further back off Main if we need to create that kind of buffer entry, whatever, on the front.
Sure.
50% of the site has to be, has to be green.
Right, but I mean, again, moving, but, but I mean, moving the building back, we still, right now, we're at open space.
He needs 50 feet for a setback back here, and I think that's pretty, he needs 50 feet for a setback to the, to the rear back here. So, I think he's had that.
Oh, he's right there, too.
Yeah, he's right there.
I saw the 24, yeah.
It's tight.
Sure, if I, if I could, and so even, even if that was a possibility to move it further north, I feel like the desire is to still move it further south for a better experience with the street. You know, to be in closer relation to what some of the residential properties are, you know, this is a two-story building, there's other two-story buildings on Main Street as well, so it's not going to be like a, a towering apartment complex. It's going to seem more like a two-story unit, maybe just a little bit larger, but there's, I mean, it's big Victorian size, almost, you know? So, I don't, I don't have any opposition to some of his material choices, I don't think he needs to change materials. I think it looks, you know, the transition from the horizontal to the vertical is, is a nice breakup, but that might change if he's looking at a different street-side experience.
He could probably put, you know, like concrete patio out front, but his building setback in the front is right there.
Right.
I mean, it's 25, so.
And that's where I was getting at. If, if you guys have an opinion to say, we'd be willing to offer an exception, in this case, for a design standard of more of, you know, a better interaction, and I think the setbacks might have pushed him to this type of plan. It might, maybe he had a whole nother concept in mind, but because of the setback, it wasn't possible. You know, because he's pinched at that 50 feet.
Yeah.
He's pinched at the 25, so he's building out as deep as he can, but if we're more open to, you know, who knows? I mean, maybe he wants to add five more feet onto that living room space, and then five feet of, of patio space, and that would be...
I, I don't think there's flexibility in changing the setbacks, if that's what you're getting at, unless you want to change the, the building setback requirements.
Well, I feel like we've, we've offered exceptions before, you know, to certain buildings as far as...
Or in a planned development district, you can.
In a planned development.
Yeah, but not in a straight zoning classification. There's like no room, there's no room for flexibility that I know of without changing the code, unless you apply for a variance, and I, I don't know how you meet a hardship here, but...
Probably not. Commissioner Hannah.
So then, hmm, so planned development obviously wouldn't fit because we're looking at MR24.
He didn't want to go the planned development route because every time he comes in here, you know, he hears, he hears time and time again that you don't really want to provide flexibility. So, he goes, I really don't want to go back through that again.
Mm-hmm.
He says, I'm going to try to do it right, and he's trying, but it's, this site is unique, it's an infill lot, and he's, he's trying to make it work with the numbers, and I mean, I'm speaking, that's what he told me, so.
Yeah, and I, I get that, too.
Yeah.
Does, does the encroachment into the, the, that 25-foot zone in the front, is that just for structures? I mean, if it was a, if it was a patio, a landscape patio with just moving the entrance around to the front, so you don't, you don't have, having four doors for the four lower units, you wouldn't necessarily have balconies because that's a structure, but if you just had decks and patios with landscaping, that at least starts to get you there? I mean, that's, to me, it's not the ideal solution, but it's certainly something that could be done within the current code without creating problems, although...
You couldn't have an awning, I don't think, then, though.
Not necessarily an awning, sure, but, but you could have a, a table with an umbrella out there or something along those lines.
If he can meet his landscape surface area ratio 50%,
Okay.
Yeah, then it's possible.
That might make it tighter, too.
I know that was tight, also.
So, thinking, what do you need to move doors? You've got living rooms and potentially patio doors, if that's what you put out there as a small cement or a brick or whatever.
Sure, as a, as a resident, I'm not sure I want a full patio door looking out on, onto Main Street either with, you know, so much glass and...
No.
Yep, good point.
Looking right into your, you know, dining room or whatever.
You don't really want to entertain out, out that side either, likely, but...
We've got all sorts of good ideas that are just not working, darn it. Well, maybe we've got some good feedback, though, from Mr. Nelson, and he can come back to us with some ideas. How do we feel, feel, folks feel about that?
I certainly think it'd be easier if he was here to see how he feels about that and tell him how we're feeling about if you, if you went another route this way, I know he's been turned off by it, but if he's open to going another route.
And if he's proposing to have the zoning class changed, I mean, be open to other classes that would actually allow him to do something more creative on the site, but...
So, how do you feel about changing the code for the dwelling setback, which requires 40 right now?
Between the buildings or something.
Between the buildings, yeah.
How, how does it affect everything else that we do, you know, other, other...
Exactly, yeah.
I mean, that's what you've got to look at, you know? You can try to change something for one thing, but you've got to look at how it affects everybody else down the road.
I would, I mean, if we could make it specific, because I think this is a specific site because it's on Main Street, so building setback in MR24 on Main Street, so we don't get this again. get this again, right? If someone ever wants to do that, you know, do, because it's a completely different setting, I would say, than if it was, you know, say, anywhere else in town.
But I think that's part of the discussion. Back to, one of the things I just heard you say a couple minutes ago is, he was reluctant to come in with a PUD approach. I think if he's here, I guess what I would encourage him to do is come back and say, "Okay, we're trying to make this work. If you do that, it may open up some other flexibility for him, but then we can perhaps have more input in what we're getting." At the end of the day, it's Mike's comment. He is, this, this is exactly the size of a piece of puzzle he has to have to do this, and we've got to find a way to get out of that, because he's trying to make something happen, and that's cool, and again, as an RDA member, I'd like to see us sell this property and bring this back. But I think, I think what we need to do is figure out a way with a, perhaps, again, something that's more flexible than changing all the rules for this project, you know, because that's really the impact, that if we start talking about rewriting a lot of these things, again, we don't know who else is going to be impacted.
Right.
Commissioner Hannah?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, he's, he's spread it as far north and south as he can, and he's asking for exceptions east and west, but I also think that we're, it seems to be, we're more favorable for the two-building, two-story approach than if he was able to put in there, you know, one massive building and have one big eight-unit building. So, I mean, in this case, I feel like there is a lot of favor for this type of plan, and we understand the limitations.
That's why the PUD makes sense.
All right, Michael, do you have some feedback to take back? Are you comfortable?
Um...
As you can be.
I'm not comfortable, but, yeah, yeah, thanks for the feedback.
Commissioner Engelberger?
If I could, just one other thing. You know, the, when the RDA, the RDA tried to sell this thing as a commercial lot, basically, you know, I mean, we looked at, you know, commercial-type buildings with two or three tenants or something like that, and, you know, that would probably have worked on the site, and, I mean, maybe that's what this site is, you know, so you've got to kind of look at reality here, too, and, you know, if, if something else had worked better, I don't know if he would look at something like that, but he mainly does residential things, I believe, but, you know, maybe he can think about if there's some type of a commercial use that he could do here.
Again, that was clearly our original thought, and we've had no takers, especially in lieu of other developments in town, and so that's why when Mr. Nelson came and talked to the RDA, we felt this was the possibility, again, sight unseen, without knowing exactly what we had in mind, it was truly an infill transitional piece of property, and we were willing to try and give him the opportunity to see if he can make something work.
Hopefully, he can bring us something back that works.
Thanks, Luke.
Yeah, he's, he's really going to want to know what direction this body is going. I know the question's going to be, "Well, you know, I can do all this extra work, I can have somebody draw this up the way you want it," but at the end of the day, if you're not going to change the code to allow it, you know, to happen, he's spending money for nothing, and then he's going to have to go back and rework it again and again. So either you're going to be for changing the code to make it happen here, or, or you're not, and he's just going to have to probably make it one building and move on.
So basically, what is the code change that you'd be looking?
The dwelling unit separation requires 40 feet, in this case, really, for both the group development and, and just the flat-out requirements for the MR 24, so...
And Mr. Scott, 20, instead of 40, right?
Right, he's got 20 now.
But it's, you know, like we, like we mentioned, I mean, sure would be nice if you could have something where the face of the building actually faces Main Street, like most other faces of buildings, you know.
Can you remind me what this is currently zoned at before the proposed change?
It was planned business.
Okay.
Planned business, yeah.
Used to be a gas station for years. Commissioner Hannah?
Thank you. So, a few things, you know, I'm, I'm thinking of other kind of multi-unit buildings in town that don't really face the street, and that's the buildings on Jackson, right behind Pick and Save, and those have a similar type of layout, walkways down the middle and garages in the middle, and that, I mean, that really is just kind of a pass-through, thoroughfare. You almost kind of don't even notice those buildings. But in regards to directions for Mr. Nelson, planned development would be an option, and that'd be something that we'd be open to, I, I think that's what it sounds like, that would allow him more flexibility. Or I would, I would be open to looking at the code, I mean, you mentioned, you know, the code and for the conditional use for the group dwelling, that's the code we'd be looking at?
Well, it's twofold. The group development, part of the conditional use, you know, there's some language there, and then...
MR 24.
Yeah, the MR 24 district requirements.
I'd be, I'd be open to, you know, looking at what the other municipalities have, it sounds like there really isn't a whole lot, you know, the one that seemed most favorable to me was the one that, you know, based on building size, and want a key, you know, building height, you know, two-story would be 20 feet, three-story would be 30 feet, four-story, 40 feet, or whatever, not saying that it has to be that way. In regards to MR 24, I'd be open to adjusting that, specific to Main Street, almost kind of like how we do our downtown overlay district or wherever, but it was, it was just adjusted specifically to Main Street, because I feel like in a Main Street setting, there's a different application for the type of building that you want and type of experience, as opposed to, say, a multifamily, you know, a few multifamilies over by Kaganza School, or different things in different areas that aren't necessarily, it's just a different feel in that neighborhood, where it is more multifamily, but, so I don't know how you guys feel about that, as far as code adjustment, as far as we're just specific to Main Street?
I don't know where this fits, but did he look at, the picture that comes to my mind is row houses. Did he look at row houses with the portraits out front and those, I mean, I don't know that it would work here, but that's what I think of when I, as I'm listening to you talk, it sounds like a row house.
But at the end of the day, just looking at the, at the square footage and the distance, I mean, yes, it could perhaps work, but I don't know that it...
There's not enough room there, but that's what I see when I'm listening to you all talk, is a row house, or the, a group of row houses.
That's the kind of architecture that would be more appropriate for that particular site, but, you know, I...
It's not big enough.
Yeah, for me, you know, it's not just an issue of Main Street, although it's crucial here, it's, it's really what is the primary street. So if this particular zoning class was somewhere else in the community, to me, whatever the primary street is or the neighborhood street, there should be a relationship between the building and that street. And in this particular case, the primary street would be Main Street, not necessarily the back easement, which is now, in one case, the buildings are facing the back easement, and in the other, it's Prairie, which Prairie's, I mean, a great residential street, but it's not really the primary street of this location. And I'm personally, I'd have to go back and look at the zoning map to see how many times this MR 24 comes up and throughout the community where it's located for me to make an assessment. I have no problem diving into it, but I'd want to look at where else it takes, where else that zoning class is used within the community, and, and what kind of impacts changes that we're making for downtown are going to impact those other areas. But again, I do think it might make more sense at this location to just do planned development. And we're trying to fit, we're trying to fit a zoning class into a location where it's not necessarily the best use of the real estate.
Okay. Well, we've already voted on a motion to table, or did we?
Yep.
Yep, we did.
We did, all right.
Yeah, it was just sort of information.
Information to continue the conversation. Yep, thank you.
Yep.
So let's move on to a request by Terry Rigdon for a certified survey map approval to combine the properties at 500 Dunkirk Avenue.
Yeah, this request came up essentially because the property owner here would like to build a detached garage on an adjacent lot he owns, and you can't build an accessory structure on a vacant lot, so you have, he has to combine the lots to be able to do that. So, and this property's located at the corner of Dunkirk and Eighth Street. Yeah, let's see, here, go to the, so that's what he's proposing, is to combine, combine the lots. Recommendation to council is necessary?
And he's combining which lots, Michael?
Yeah, just, you show where the existing is?
What's he talking about?
These, well, these two. That's where he lives, and this is the adjacent...
Okay, thank you.
Lot, right there on Eighth Street, and that's, that's the survey.
It's right at the John.
It outlines in dark, correct?
Yep, yep.
So is his idea to build a garage to the south, then, on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
You know, if it would be attached, or is he talking like a detached?
Attached, yeah, yeah.
I'll move for approval.
It's a motion by Hannah, seconded by Kirchman.
Nope.
Trul.
By Trul, I'm sorry, came that way.
Recommend, recommend council.
For discussion. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries. Next is a discussion and possible action regarding a proposed ordinance amendment of Chapter 2-376 relating to the planning commission member composition. And I know that this discussion was at council, so I'll hand it off to Alderperson Trul to begin the conversation.
Again, it came from CACP, is where it, we proposed this. The back, additional background, Alderman Mijewski had talked about the possibility of creating a planning oversight committee, perhaps made just of council, to get more input, and as one of the folks who objected to that, I basically, at CACP, suggested that perhaps if we're really looking to try and get more input, that a better way to do it would be, you know, our current structure right now is, is three council and three citizen reps, and then the mayor, to go ahead and add one more citizen and one more council person. But additionally, part of the justification I made as a part of that is that suggested that perhaps the four council people would each represent a different district in town. Presently, Councilman Alderman Bartlett and I both represent the fourth district, and my thought was that if we went to the four and four, again, then virtually every time an item would come before us, a council person would be representing their district, could talk about, hopefully, enlist neighborhood input on the project, and so that's, that's the, bit of the background and why I suggested that we move, move forward with it this way.
Thank you. I, if I, I shared some of the history of planned commission composition at the CACP committee, and, and shared with them the fact that we have three elder persons on planned commission, and their, their role was not necessarily to represent just their district, their role sitting on planned commission was to represent the city as a whole. So that's why sometimes you'll see two from one district, and none from any, another district. The concept and the idea was to seek, seek elder persons who had experience either in the planning, or the building, or the trades kind of fields, and that's, that's where the appointments came from in the past. It was a different idea than what's being proposed this evening, and...
Just an additional comment, some of the wording became a little more convoluted because the question came up, what if the council, what if, if councils, the size of the council changes, or we change the number of aldermanic districts, and then the idea would be that it would move accordingly. So perhaps if, you know, the next census, if we went, went back to three districts rather than four, then that adjustment would be made. But again, conceptually, that was, that was the discussion, at least in terms of kind of our rationale for why we were talking about having one rep from each of the districts.
There were questions about whether a change like this is legal, therefore, you'll see in your packet a letter from Attorney Dregney, as well as some information from the League of Municipalities, and, and both identify the fact that the council has the, has the authority to change and make such a change if so desired. Commissioner Bartlett?
Yes, yeah, I had a question about legality, yeah, thanks for getting that information, it looks like it goes back quite a long ways.
Yeah.
So, it's good, I don't have a concern about this, it makes sense to me, as we're growing, to give all the districts, make sure they have representation, and I'm not concerned with having, it's good to have another citizen on here as well, an elected citizen, so, can you explain to me, you said, Alderman Trul, that if the council ever expanded, there's wording in here that the commission would expand as well, or just...
Yeah, I mean, it gets to a point, Matt was talking about, if, if the, the question would be if the district, number of districts ever changed, that theoretically, the planning commission would, would move accordingly.
Would it add another citizen representative as well, or just an elder person?
Yeah, right, and, and the discussion was, it could go the other way, could be a choice that, that we could end up having three districts with four council members from each of those districts, well, then it would drop back to three and three, but, but again, part of the intent was to try and, and really, I think, I think this, from, my perception from, from the rest of the council is that, obviously, this is a very important commission, and, and frankly, council has, has expressed at different times a concern that perhaps we have too much power. And, and so, again, it was with that in mind that, that when Alderman Mijewski was talking about some type of an oversight body, I, I really didn't think that made sense, to put another layer in here. I suggested that perhaps what we should do is, is from a council standpoint, perhaps meet annually or biannually to talk about our objectives and our goals, again, realizing what's gone on over the last six to nine months. We went through the whole comp plan, which, which all of us that have had the good fortune of being here during that time, know that there was a lot of discussions about input and the like, and so with that, and then the discussion about having, you know, possibly having that oversight committee, I really didn't think that, that's in our best interest. So adding, the possibility of adding another council member, but more importantly, honestly, is adding the citizen member, because I think we're in a unique situation. We've got, right now, and I applaud the three members that are, that are part of this group, I mean, you each have very different and diverse backgrounds and, and contribute, you know, tremendously, and I think if we have the ability to add, you know, perhaps a fourth member, I hope that we continue to have the kind of mix that we've got. Commissioner Barman has brought a unique background to us now on the historic side. Commissioner Hannah has, has, certainly has the landscaping and a background that's been, we've, we've fallen on Matt many, many times, asking him to tell us what the plans actually mean in terms of the plants. Commissioner Kirchma is, is, you know, brings the, the construction kind of background. Commissioner Mahoney, who went off, was a planner, and so I think that, that ability for future mayors to have that ability to really bring that expertise in, I think, is, is very important. So I would encourage you to support this. I certainly understand if, for some of the folks who say we don't need to do this, but I guess I, I see the advantage of, of the ability to have, again, one more citizen member, but then also have council folks, and while we are appointed, you know, council are appointed to represent the city, I just think there's a unique mix here, because frankly, when we were, when we have discussions about some of the neighborhood issues, we don't always have council folks that come, and it would be nice to know what, you know, what the opinions are of the prospective neighbors, and I'm hoping that, should we move forward with this, again, the four council people will be able to, you'll always have somebody that should be able to give us some sense as to what's going on in the neighborhood, whether this is a good or a bad thing.
Thank you. Commissioner Engelberger?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to vote against this, I just, I don't see an advantage of this, I mean, it's going to be a larger commission if you do this. I'm not sure what problem we're trying to address by doing this, you know, I mean, I can understand representation from each district, and then, but to the same thing, you know, well, then if we change districts and we only have three down the road, then it'll go back to three, and, you know, I, I just don't see that we're really... then it'll go back to three and, you know, I just don't see that we're really affecting a problem here. I don't see that there's a problem, so I'm just not going to support this.
Commissioner Barman?
In working with other communities across country and working with other commissions, I think one of the advantages of a commission is it generally tends to be less political. And the idea is to have expertise at the table, which, I mean, Mayor, the way you described, the selection of council members based on some level of experience or connection to planning issues makes more sense than, to me, makes more sense than just picking council people to represent a district. And if they know that they're representing a district, now you're bringing politics into the commission, which it's, to me, that's not the way commissions are generally, they run parallel to council. Council takes care of all the politics, and this body is supposed to be the apolitical or non-political entity that just evaluates good planning. And so I probably lean, like Commissioner Engelberger, away from the need to politicize the commission.
Thank you. Commissioner Hannah?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I would definitely agree with Commissioner Barman on that. I don't think, it definitely splits up the commission to be like, you know, I'm representing this segment of the city when, but I don't think that's the message we want to send, you know? And then if you do get a constituent from your neighborhood coming up and, you know, has expressed all this information to you solely as your representative, you know, it, on the council, I mean, council members are there to represent the city. And that's what everybody should be doing, you know, on the commission and everywhere is that for the betterment of the community regardless of, you know, where you live in the city. So, yeah, I don't, I don't see that, I mean, I get the concept. And, you know, maybe in a bigger political body, it makes more sense. But I also don't want to limit the commission to have someone on the commission that doesn't quite understand, you know, there's a lot of information in a small little plan that you need to understand and comprehend. And you might understand something that's going on in your neighborhood, but I would hope as an elected official, you understand what's going on all over the city. But, you know, we've had an alderperson as recent as, less, maybe within the two years, who stepped back off the commission because it was too much for him to understand. He didn't quite comprehend all of the plans. And then what happens if the other two, you know, I know there's also scheduling issues with certain council members who can't make, you know, Monday night meetings. And then you're restricted by this ordinance or that you need to have someone represented. And then if that person fails to show up, you know, on multiple occasions or doesn't necessarily have the expertise that someone else may have. So I guess I, I don't see this as necessary. I think we're pretty effective as a group of, you know, what we have here, three and three, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess as a staff person, I would tend to agree with, you know, the latter part of the discussion there. And it just seems like if you're going to add somebody, you know, add somebody with some more expertise. But I don't think anything's broken. So I don't, I don't know what the reasoning behind the change myself, but.
Thank you. Commissioner Kirchma?
Yeah, I mean, the point of this not supposed to be a political committee, it's been nothing but politics for years and years and years. It's horrible that way, in my opinion. And I've been on here, I don't know, it's probably six or seven years. And I think I got, when I got on, it was when Walmart was looking at the county, you know, out there on County B property, and someone left because of the politics. So to say that, that there's no politics, it's just, I mean, that might be the ideal, but it's not reality in today's world. And especially in the last six to months to a year and everything going on with forward development and everything out there. You know, I guess I'm voting in favor of this. I think it's, I think having representation from the districts is for different locations within the city. And then also having the expertise of another public member, I think, makes a lot of sense to me. So you don't have, you have people from all different areas of the city, and that's from a location perspective, not necessarily politics. But then having, you know, the ability to have another public member with additional expertise, I think this makes a lot of sense. So I'm voting for it.
Thank you. Further comments? I don't yet have a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion to approve recommendation to council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Kirchma, seconded by Truul to approve recommendation of this ordinance amendment to the common council. All those in favor?
No, more discussion.
All right.
Thank you.
You always got to get the last, the last word in there, don't you, Michael? You just kind of wait till it catch me all the time.
What's the last word?
He does want the last.
No, no, I don't, I don't want the last word. I just, you know, I mean, there's talk about politics being played. I mean, when I think of just about every time we vote on things, it's based on our plan and our zoning ordinances, and that's what we vote on. We vote on those things. I don't, we don't vote on politics here at the plan commission. When I look at this plan commission, right up and down the line here, everybody's represented here from either construction or some type of building process. That may not be the case when you have one alder from each district. And, you know, I mean, when I look at the makeup of the city council right now, there's one or two others that are involved in construction and building, but most of them aren't. A lot of smart people there, but, you know, I just, I just don't see a need for this. So I'm going to vote against it.
Thank you. Commissioner Truul?
Thank you, Your Honor. And again, from my standpoint, I'm comfortable either way. But as a backdrop, I want to remind you that the reason this came forward is that at the April appointment, the council changed the recommendations of the mayor. And again, from the standpoint of the citizen appointees. And on the council floor that evening, there was a motion to replace me as a replacement, put someone else in. And the comments that were made that evening were that we needed to give other people a chance. And we needed to give other people a chance to learn about the planning commission. Those were, if you go back and look at the record, those were the comments. And when that didn't happen, it was after that that at least, again, Alderman Mieske and I believe a couple of folks spoke to the idea of, again, perhaps creating a different oversight body on planning. That planning was out of control and is doing too many things, is not, is perhaps getting too much power and doesn't report to anyone else and the like. And so it was, that was the background. I've been fortunate enough to be on this committee for a number of years and thought it was working pretty well. But it was out of those kind of movements that this came forward. So again, I have, please know that while I've spoken to it tonight, you will not break my heart if we turn down the motion that I just brought up. But I want you to be aware that, again, that was kind of the background. And so a kind of a discussion about, you know, there may be, there may be other reasons or other issues that we need to take up or figure out a different process to deal with the council's agenda on some of the plan issues.
Thank you. Alderperson Engelberger?
Thank you, Your Honor. And I do recall how I voted on that. I did vote to keep you on the commission as an expert in construction and a PhD council member that, very smart, but not a construction background, I didn't vote for. And, you know, those are the types of things, I think we need expertise construction-wise and building-wise and zoning-wise on these, on this commission. So I would recommend that we keep it the same that it is now. Thank you.
Well, I agree with Commissioner Kirchma that things, everything unfortunately in today's world can get political. I don't believe that plan commissions are intended to be political. Plan commissions are intended to be, to be looking at the codes and the rules and the regulations and are intended to vote on those and that criteria alone, not how they may or may not feel politically. So I too support the current plan commission makeup. I think it makes, makes sense how it works together and how there is a good blend of council, alderpersons and citizen members. And those are my thoughts. Alderperson Hannah and then Truul.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, Alderperson Truul, you mentioned the alderperson Mieske and wanting to form this other oversight committee and all this different stuff. And honestly, I don't see how adding one more council member and one more citizen member is going to change anything besides, you know, it could, you know, we could get more expertise, but we could not. You know, and it could pigeonhole from not being able to make the right decision to what makes sense for the commission. So honestly, from Alder Mieske's thoughts, I don't, I don't see how this is achieving what he wants anyways. And I'd invite him to step on board to the commission next year or be appointed if he really feels like we're overstepping our bounds when we're just doing what is put forth, you know, before us and making our best decisions, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Truul?
Thank you, Your Honor. One of the, my parting comment is this, and it has nothing to do with this motion that's on here tonight. One of the nicest things that I see as the council rep who makes the motions, you know, at council and takes our recommendations back is just how often it's seven to nothing. It's not four to three every single time or things like that. I believe that we've been good at working together. I, you know, it takes, you know, go back forty minutes ago when we were talking about the 314 West Main property. I think we genuinely are trying to find ways to make things happen. And I think on the whole, I think the plan commission has, you know, Commissioner Kirchma mentioned about KPW. We've tried to work with them, we've tried to deal with other issues. And so, again, I, you know, I'll shut up and we can vote and vote this thing down. But I feel like I wanted to say that, though, that it's, I've always been impressed with the cooperation that we actually bring. And frankly, having the different expertise allows us that opportunity to look to each other and say what does make sense. And I think we, I'd like to think that I too, Alderperson Engelberger, have wondered about that interesting new building out there on Williams Drive because it didn't seem like what I remembered either. But, and most other issues, I think we, I'd like to think that we have, we represent the city and hopefully if we do recommend changes, we do make the project better. So I would encourage folks to continue to do what we do and I hope that the community recognizes that we are trying to work with opportunities. I think the other part about that too is, back to developers, I don't think have a problem with rules. I think our biggest challenge is when we're changing the rules and we're moving things midstream and doing things. And I think that's, that's, so it's important for us to make sure we get our objectives out there and then try and live with them. So thanks, everybody, for your indulgence.
The last word.
Yep. I hate to say the last word again.
I'll have to give you a hard time.
I just want to say one other thing. You know, I'm only elected by the voters of District Two, a quarter of the city. When I'm sitting here at the planning commission and even when I'm sitting at the council, I'm trying to look out for all of our citizens, not just citizens from my district. So, and I think that's how everybody does and should.
Yep, and that's how the plan commission works, and it works pretty darn well. So I will go back, we have a motion by Kirchma, seconded by Alderperson Truul to approve the proposed ordinance amendment of Chapter 2-376 relating to the planning commission member composition. All those in favor of a change, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
That motion fails. Future agenda items, we know that, or we know that, or I believe that, Mr. Nelson's conditional use permit as well as site plan approval will most likely be back?
Yes.
What else do you think, Michael?
You know? Nothing else that I know of right now.
Nothing right now?
Yeah.
All right, I'm sure something will come up. One motion remaining.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Kirchma, seconded by-
Aye.
Truul. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Thank you.